Good afternoon. If you would, if you've got a cellphone on you, take, put it on mute or switch it off. This is the May twenty-third, twenty-sixth, East City Council Meeting. If you will, we'll stand and we'll let Mr. Jason give the indication.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you once again. Thank you for all the many blessings you bestowed upon us. Father, please forgive us where we fail you. Father, help us conduct the business of this city in a manner which you would see fit. Let thy will be done and not ours, Lord. Thank you for all our many blessings. In your name we pray. Amen.
And we do pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First thing on the agenda, we need to approve the agenda. I hear a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Do I have any questions from anybody? If not, I need a second.
Second.
On favor, raise your hand. So carried by all. Next, we need to approve the amendments that are made tonight, twenty-sixth, regular meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve those amendments?
I'll make a motion.
Do I hear a second? Anybody have any questions? Do I hear a second?
I've got a question.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, but are you on a new business number one or are you on an old business number one?
This is the amendments of our last meeting. Mr. Provo's amendments. Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
On favor, raise your hand. So carried by all. Old business, second and final reading, amendment of the Dodge Eastman Recreation Order been approved. We'll claim, quick claim deed.
Again, this was the second reading. I have the ordinance in front of me. For anyone who would like a copy of it, we will make one. I'm not going to read the four pages. Yes, sir. Would you like to get a copy? And this is, you know, stating that the city will, um, will remove this interest into the Dodge County Recreation Authority and those properties owned by the city and county together that make up the Recreation Authority. And there's a small piece of property, you know, that would be deeded over to the Recreation Authority in the process that was, you know, still had the city's name on that deed.
I don't need a, do we need a motion?
Do we need a motion? I need a motion to approve that.
So moved.
So moved. Any questions?
Yes.
Yes.
You can have that copy.
The one that?
What small piece of property was going to be donated?
There's a, there's a description of that piece of property that's in the, um, that's in that copy right there on the, on the second page.
And again, that's property that's out at the Recreation Authority, coming down the highway.
In the county.
Yeah, in the county.
In the county.
Not within the city limits.
Right.
That's the reason we are reading. Doing away with the Recreation Department out there is because that it's in the county and we don't have no power over what goes on out there, so to our best interest is to go ahead and do what we're doing. Any more questions?
Yeah. How could an individual like myself challenge the city to not come away or do away with their shares within the Dodge County Eastman Park and Recreation?
All right. Can you answer that question?
You're, you're doing that right now by addressing the City Council. And I believe you voiced that before, but what, what they're conveying is, is property in Dodge County to Dodge County. The Recreation Department will still stand.
Right.
It's just that Eastman, the city of, is withdrawing, um, its authority over that board and its input into that board and any vested property interest in the property. So that's what it's doing today.
Right. I'm just saying that, um, as a community member and a community leader, I speak on behalf of a community that we wish for the city to not relinquish their responsibilities that deals with Eastman Dodge County Park and Recreation. We feel that it would be a stronger, um, alliance between the city and the county if the Park and Recreation Department was to continue their, um, with the first ordinance under sec, code section twenty-eight, if they continue to follow that ordinance, um, to help the communities in each one of these parks, not only Sunset, but every last one of the parks in Ryan, Myland, Chauncey, Chester, and also Eastman, the city limits. The community wished to see that these parks also have funds allocated to it so that they can develop their communities and the children that live and play in these parks. Again, I'm asking, and also the district leader is not here, that, that lives in that area, to speak on this, on, for his behalf. We wish that, um, and also the pastor's alliance, which we, excuse me, well, we have a member here. We plan on going before the alliance and make a comprehensive plan as well for the park. And we definitely, I had a conversation with Terry Neville, uh, excuse me, Travis Neville, about continuing to manage and govern each park, recreation, playground, and baseball field that's in the county and city's either ownership or control. And we definitely want to see the support from the council members.
Mr. Guyton, if it can comfort to you, um, none of what you just said applied to the ordinance that you're talking about. The Recreation Authority had no control over any park outside of what was at the Recreation Commission, so this change does not affect that one way or the other either way. So, um, I'm not sure what you want that code section to apply to, but it is not that scenario that you just described before, and like I said, it doesn't affect that scenario value either way either.
I understand. I'm also asking, if the city does relinquish their responsibilities with the county, um, what is the plan for a city park recreation commission?
We, we at this time cannot say.
Is there, uh?
At this time, we cannot say. We need to go on. Gentlemen, on.
Do you want to vote? That's my last question.
I'm beginning to get the vote. Gentlemen, take under my word what you have just said. I had a motion, I need a second. Do I have a second?
A second.
I got a second. On favor, raise your hand. So carried by all. Okay. New business, Lake Charles, I mean, Mr. Charles Williams.
On behalf of the Development Authority and Chamber of Commerce, I don't have anything to bother the City Council with tonight, so I won't do that. But I will speak on behalf of Sharon Complining because I don't think she's here. Just to report that the Foggers Market had approximately three hundred people again this week, and it's doing very well. I know that you support it, and it looks like it's going to continue to blossom. Thanks to your city manager, he bought three bands of produce and tottered them off and paid for them and toted them off.
I was waiting for that, Charles.
It was a good day. I was watching for you. Thank you.
Charles, did the bands play out there this past Saturday?
They did not play this past Saturday. It was just every other week or so, every time that you could.
Thank you, Charles.
Yes, sir.
Any questions for Charles? Thank you, Charles. Okay. Next on the agenda, need to approve, approve replacement of filters at the West Water Treatment Plant.
It is that time for some of our maintenance items to be brought up at our wastewater treatment facility. And I asked Mr. Hofstadter, consulting engineer, to come and help do some explaining for some, um, some updates on that facility and the upkeep and needs thereof.
Thank you, Jason. First of all, I am extremely proud that y'all are actually doing something that I said that you should do, starting in two thousand nine, and that is to put money aside for equipment when it runs out. When you're in the wastewater treatment plant business, that's some nasty things that we're doing in there. There is no product in the world that can last forever when you're, when you're dealing with that. It's kind of like a car. You know, tires are going to run out, spark flow is going to run out, and you've got to replace them. So, you know, November of two thousand nine letter, we recommended, and I'm not going to go through, I'm not going to go through all the numbers unless Buddy wants me to, and then I'll, I'll read every number if you provide for me to, Buddy. Buddy, we recommend between eleven thousand and twenty thousand dollars a month. Okay, that'd be a hundred forty to two hundred forty thousand dollars a year. On this particular item, which is the filters, which is that cloth filter at the end with the, that's our final cleansing of the wastewater before it goes through the UV, we recommended twenty-seven to ten thousand dollars a year. And now we are in year seven, and we said that it would last for twenty-five and seven years, so you're on the last part of it now. We're not saying you just go out and replace it just because I put down five to seven years what we're, so we went out and looked at it, and your, and your operator has said this cloth filters, and they're frayed off at the end. Okay, you're still being permitted, but just don't kick this can down the road, okay? But, you know, like, like a lot of cities do, you have the money, this is what we said is set aside for it, and this is what we need to do with it. So, and like I said, I, I think Ms. Bee was aware of this, and I think Ms. Bee has been putting the money aside, so it's time to, it's time to do it. And as the years roll on, you have seven years old man, then it's ten, 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 eleven, stuff is going to wear, especially for pumps. I think we've already replaced one waste, uh, return aggravates pump. It ran hot for thirty-four years, and we had to replace it, but anyway, that's the short version. I'm sure everybody would love for me to go into the long version, which I love to do. I have the, I have, we estimate the cost to be fifty thousand dollars to replace it. I think it's forty-five is the, is the actual number.
Well, it actually came in at just a replacement of filters at around eighteen thousand.
Seventeen, yeah, eighteen, three ninety-eight.
And that is, that additional cost that we have, that company supplied their labor to do it, um, as of right now, our employees feel confident that they can replace it without any problem. They got in and have worked in, so.
All right, well, that's to our good. We put, we put fifty thousand, and now we're going to do it for twenty, and practice your gas and do that. Okay? I recommend, if you're a city engineer, I recommend that you proceed with doing this.
First of all, we need a motion to approve.
Eighteen, what was that total again? Eighteen, three ninety-eight is what it is.
Eighteen, three ninety-eight.
I'm looking at motion that we approve the eighteen thousand, three hundred ninety-eight dollars for replacement costs for the filters that our folks are going to install.
Do I have any questions besides? Anybody in the audience? Yes.
Is this going to help with the odor?
No. No.
Still there.
Ain't as bad as it was.
It's still bad in the mornings early.
Yeah, I won't argue with that, but it's a lot better than it was. Any questions from the council? None, I need a second.
I'll second.
Second, on favor, raise your hand. So carried by all. Okay.
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you.
Ms. Becky, I think you all come up here while we do this, if you don't mind.
Just come up here and stand. I got a head on the side, not you. Just stay right there.
It's good to see y'all. Good to see you all.
Thank you, Charles.
I need a motion to approve the monthly bills.
I got the motion. Any question from anybody? They're right there in front of you. None, I need a second.
Second.
Second, on favor, raise your hand. So carried by all. I'm sorry, Becky, I just wanted to ask myself.
Okay.
This is, this is approved and replaced antenna at Legion Drive Water Tower. I understand that this is yours.
It is, it's a bomb, but from what? Now, Gary's probably got into it more than I have. When they replaced the cables and all up there. Give them mic. This is for the radio equipment that we have for the police department. They're redoing it all for the county and all too. When they went back and looked at ours, we're not getting enough of the transmission that comes out when they wanted to replace, and he said if we replaced the antenna, that it would really help our reception. They're going up there anyway to do it for the volunteer fire departments, county line. So what we had all decided since they're going up there and they charge a fee to go up on the tower, that we would all go at this time and, and to replace our tower while they were there, and that's what it was for.
Any questions, Ms. Becky?
That, that total cost is three thousand, four hundred eighty-nine dollars, thirty-four eighty-nine, which I believe is about half of what we initially.
What we initially had because they're going up on the tower anyway.
Thank you. Okay. I need a motion to approve that amount.
So moved.
So moved. Do I have any questions from anybody?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a question about, uh, did included in that annual monthly fee, is there included body cameras for police?
That has nothing to do with it.
Oh. When can I address that next?
Our, our police department has body cameras already.
I didn't know.
They already got them.
Oh, thank you.
Any more questions? Any questions from the council? None, I need a second. On favor, raise your hand. So carried by all.
Mr. Ronnie Wood.
Okay, we're going to go into the building inspector recommendation. Mr. Jason.
Have a recommendation from building inspector, uh, a Mr. James Nice, one twenty-one to Lacey Street, um, request permission to add a sunroom, enclosed patio, sunroom to, to his current residence. Um, has been, all necessary paperwork's been completed, and building inspector, or Mr. Stanley, co-county and city building inspector, has signed off, and everything is in order.
I'm going to make a motion to approve this inspector recommendation. Do I have any questions from anybody? Any from the council? I need a second.
Second.
On favor, raise your hand. So carried by all. All right, next.
Excuse me. Next thing is, uh, planning and zoning recommendations. This is a follow-up from a previous confusion on, on whether this individual lot was rezoned or the whole block was rezoned. So the Planning and Zoning Commission has met once again, and the proper notices of public hearings have been advertised to, to indicate that it is indeed the entire block and not just the one parcel. So those have been clarified, and, uh, let's see here. And I have the, the copies of those hearings if anyone would like to see, you know, those, those descriptions. But the Planning and Zoning Committee has approved that and has brought to the council for their approval.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the building permit for the N. A. Flaxer property?
I'll make a motion.
All right. Do I have any question from anybody in the audience? Do I have any questions from council?
I just want to note that, um, our previous comprehensive plan talks a lot about infill development and how, when appropriate, the city would pursue stabilizing neighborhoods by, you know, doing that infill. This has been an area that other cities have used to justify why they may just zone out a particular parcel instead of the whole block, and that's just something that I would like to see us either get education on so that we feel more comfortable. But I feel like a lot of time, we force rezoning of entire blocks when really there's only a parcel that needs, needs it, so I'd say that's just something I want to see us become a more informed body on so that we won't have as much hesitation in rezoning, you know, large swaths. But I will offer you that second.
Okay. On favor, raise your hand. So carried by all. Any city manager for?
Very short and sweet tonight. First thing would be reminder to all councilmen, which probably don't need very much reminding, because our GMA Annual Conference is coming up at the end of June, so make plans for that. That's an opportunity for.
Get updates on that.
It is the twenty, what is it, June the twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, Friday through Tuesday, which is, you know, really another opportunity for the council to receive training and classwork. Ms. Becky, want to add?
Yes. Training Friday, training Saturday, training Monday, Tuesday. I would like to say, I went to a training board meeting while we're talking about training and all, and nobody here would know this man or anything, but there was a member on the training board. We met Friday, it was a week ago, and he died suddenly last Tuesday night. And so, but he was a very good board member, a lot of input and stuff and all, and was a council member from another city and all, so, but Chuck passed away last week, and, uh, he'll, from, from a training board side, he'll be sadly missed because he was, you know, very, um, yeah, very knowledgeable and was, was really interested in the training board and training of, of council members and all, so. But, um, there is a lot of training that will be done all during this convention.
Thank you. Uh, next on my list is just an update on, you know, all the mini projects that we've had going on throughout the last, really, twelve months. We are approaching the end of, of almost every one of those. I believe we've paid our, our last pay request for, um, the sewer project that ran on this side of town from behind Chordy's, which was, um, it was, was a great need that has been completed. We are about to be finished with the consent order project, fifth, um, fifth to eighth Legion Drive Outfall. I believe we lack one more pay request and about, you know, two percent of the project left to be completed. CDBG in Bacon Heights, um, again, you know, is, the weather has really hampered that project. It has caused it to move a lot slower than we anticipated. We're probably ninety-five percent through with that project now. I don't know if you've ridden through there lately. It's a dramatic, um, change over the, probably the last two to three months when it was really rainy, really wet. So we are, we're again, approaching the end of several of these big infrastructure projects that we've, that we started in the last twelve to fifteen months. I know we, you know, talked about it before. We are moving forward with some technology updates here in City Hall, so hopefully we'll see some of those come to fruition within the next, uh, before the next council meeting and the next, if possible. And that's all I have.
I just had a question on.
Sure.
The DDA's asking me, uh, the benches on downtown is.
Yeah, I spoke with, uh, Mr. Maz with today, actually, on that, and we're, um, you know, going to move forward. It was originally, I believe, a local contractor was, was ready to do that project, but it might be something that city, um, city employees, we install those. They're all here. They're ready. I believe it's eight trash receptacles, might be ten receptacles, ten receptacles and eight benches that will be going into, have the beautification of downtown. They are, they are here.
I just want to note that, that the DDA did a great job, pretty much exhausting their budget to go ahead and pre-purchase those benches, and a lot of community organizations and banks have already started to, uh, you know, purchase those plaques for those to help replenish their funding, so it's been a great, you know, opportunity for them to do something great for downtown and kind of receiving some of that money to start doing other projects with, so I'm really impressed with the strides the DDA's made.
I agree.
Okay. Next on the agenda, business from the council. Mr. Wood, do you have anything you'd like to bring up?
No, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, I didn't have anything myself, but I had a conversation with Pastor Dawson a little earlier, and he wanted me to share one of the updates from, uh, the Minstrel Alliance's open forum last week for, uh, Sunset Park. They, they did, there was a number of people that were from the community as well, and just really building a lot of the backstory on how the Minstrel Alliance became to be involved with it, and, you know, their actual.
For your mind.
I'm sorry, I'm doing that turn thing. And their actual, um, role in it, you know, as a friends of the park, you know, not so that they're any authority that's governing, you know, the park, but they're more of the city's eyes and ears and that community, community liaison for what happens at the park. And, uh, Pastor Dawson and I also attended, we were able to share with them the money that the city had projected in the budget this year towards the park maintenance and how it was the general consensus of the council that that money would actually be used this year for the Sunset Park. And, um, I'm sorry, they had a preliminary list of, uh, the things that they, as a group, came together, you know, brought from the community. Uh, I pressed the pastor Dawson, did share that that is pretty much a finalized list, so I'll make sure he gets that out to everybody, um, so that the city can help start working on that. The Minstrel Alliance has also pledged to match what the city puts in for that park towards X twenty-five hundred, so that's that pool. And, uh, they are interested in continuing the relationship of, you know, helping to be the eyes and ears for the park. Uh, Mr. Guyton, um, he was, he was there in attendance, and, um, I'm sure he can agree that there was a lot of the headway on what's the next steps for us, what needs to be corrected with the money that we have this year, and I'm, I'm sure that it's not going to take much time to exhaust that with these first wave of corrections, and then there's a body that will be on us to see if that's something we're going to maintain, you know, next year, or is that something we're going to kind of try to rebuild and allow that park to get to where it needs to be. So, uh, that's the update, uh, for Sunset Park and, uh, the improvements that I'm sure we can help kick off this year.
Buddy?
No.
I don't either. Next, all the dissertation. Anybody like? Yes, Charles.
Just want to remind everybody that Wednesday of this week at twelve o'clock is the Chamber Board Meeting. For everyone on council and everyone in the audience, please come and enjoy a wonderful meal with us. You have to sign up ahead of time, or SVP, if you didn't already get it, or call the chamber owner to make you come in. And we'll have a conversation about rentals, which became Alcoa, which now has a new name that you'll learn about when you get there Wednesday. So you might want to come and listen to it. They've been huge supporters for us and still are, so keep that in your mind and put it on your calendars for Wednesday at twelve o'clock this week.
Charles, I saw the video that you guys are advertising for a new, uh, chamber director.
Yes, sir.
About Reiner's position.
Right.
Can you just kind of briefly tell us what maybe the timeline is for that position?
We, yes, sir, I'd be glad to. Asking a question about the chamber executive that we're looking for. We posted an ad in the paper with qualifications that we're seeking. We've had several people to make application to us. The ad will run for two weeks, uh, so this week will be our second week of it, and at the end of that, we're going to take the applications that we have and look at them with our committee that's, you know, involved in it, and if we find the right person, we'll hire them. If we didn't, then we'll, we'll put the ad out there again, run it week to week until we find the right person to come in. We're looking for somebody with managerial skills, somebody who's capable of, you know, managing a chamber, so to speak, and running it like we'd like for it to go from here forward. And I think we'll find somebody. I can appreciate the question. Any other questions? Very good. Thank you.
Don't forget Wednesday.
What's the date on that, Charles?
Well, what's today's date? Four years.
Anybody else like to speak?
I'd just like to thank the council for hearing the orders and agendas of not only the pastor's alliance, but also the community that want to see a forward progressive park that will help, uh, change the culture of a community over at Sunset Park. I appreciate the knowledge and understanding that you're giving and, and the support. I just had a question about the funds that was voted on and allocated by the park for who, and, uh, I guess I would say, how can them funds be released and who would they be released to, to govern what actually is, uh, appointed or taken care of at the park?
Listen, I know this is an educational experience for you, so just to give you a quick cap on how city, how the city budget works, uh, last year, it's being under her direction and the city staff put together a proposed budget, and that budget is basically a good snapshot look at what they think the expenses will be for the city for this current year that we're going under. So as in the case of Mr. Cobb, he, he didn't set his budget, but that's the budget that he's operating under, that projection. So in that budget, last year, it was projected that it was felt that about twenty-five hundred dollars will be needed for the maintenance of Sunset Park. So that was put in there as a projection. That's something this council now is pulling the trigger on to say, yes, we're going to use that twenty-five hundred dollars towards the maintenance of the park. So I know you like to view the budget as, it says that's in the budget, so that's what you're supposed to do, when really it's more so that's what we're anticipating for this year, but, you know, under, in this situation, that is something that this council has agreed that they want to. that they want to move forward with, so that is pretty much locked in. So, when you ask, where was this money, is this money gonna be used, yes, there's a lot of things in the budget. Uh, our property has added the budget for the last two years to get a new truck, and we've never pulled the trigger on it, yes, so far. And that's just part of the budget process, whereas I think our budget this year is about three point one million dollars, and that's balanced. That's what our expenses are gonna be, because that's based on what we feel we're gonna bring in with property taxes and sales taxes and whatnot, whatnot. So, when you ask about, you know, funding and things, yes, you can state that in there, that there's a line item, but there's a lot of other scenarios that go into play whether that money actually gets used.
Right.
So, in this case right now, like I said, this board has already, you know, approved for our city manager, and once we feel like we had a list of what to go after for Sunset Park, it's already been said and done that that money is going to be used this year. And whether that gets in the budget next year, that'll be something that our, my colleagues here will have to communicate to our city manager that we would want to see next year that Sunset Park stays at its funding, gets an increase, or whatever it might be.
Right. I just have a, again, I have a simple question. I just wanna know who would be responsible for that funding to make sure, like, they don't have a park representative. Again, that's what I was proposing for, like, in the proposal, to have someone, um, directly involved. I know that this, uh, Minister Alliance, I don't wanna get into the liability part and everything, and I'm just saying, uh, I don't know who's in charge and position of the city.
Generally falls under the city. Um, I know you kinda lobbied for creating the park.
Yes, sir.
And that's, uh, really a very long-term, so, you know, situation there, when you talk about standing up a professional to do that, a department with budget and all of that, you know, that might be a lot, you know, a, a great goal to look at in the long term, but in the short term, that's something that the city staff will just make sure that twenty-five hundred dollars gets spent very quickly.
Yes, sir.
To answer your question, we're not gonna write a twenty-five hundred dollar check to Sunset Park and hand it to somebody.
Right. That's what I was, that's what I was.
From what, from what Mr. Johnson was conveying from Pastor Dawson earlier, and then the Ministerial Alliance is looking to match city money and all, and they've got this list, and when they come up with it and everything, we'll work together and, and as we do stuff, it'll get paid for.
Yeah.
But, but we had enough time, we'll, we're not gonna write a check for twenty-five hundred dollars because the budget, you all said you're gonna do twenty-five hundred dollars, we're not gonna write a check and just hand it to somebody.
Appreciate it.
Does that answer?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Do we have any question, anybody else in the audience? All right, then I need a motion to adjourn.
I just wanna encourage everyone to vote, and there's a vote for the east blocks, then I feel that's very important for our community, so I'll vote your conscience on that.
I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand.